The Shenandoah County School Board to order, Ms. Shepherd, do you have a recommendation for closed session please?
I do. I recommend the Shenandoah County School Board convene in a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline or resignation under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A14 and to discuss scholastic records involving the discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters concerning any student of any state school system under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2.
Thank you. Do you hear a motion to that effect please?
Yes, I move that the Shenandoah County School Board convene in a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline or resignation under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A14 and to discuss scholastic records involving the discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters concerning any student of any state school system under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A2.
Thank you Mr. Barlow. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it carried by a vote of six zero, we will reconvene at seven PM hopefully.
Thank you.
The February meeting of the Shandor County Public School. Do I hear a motion to reconvene in open session, please?
I move to reconvene in open session.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Gutschall. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The vote carried six zero. The Shandor County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies. And second, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered by the Shandor County School Board. Each member responds "I do certify" when called by the clerk.
Ms. Welch?
ISO certified.
Mr. Gutschall?
ISO certified.
Mr. Barlow?
ISO certified.
Ms. Rutz?
ISO certified.
Mr. Keller?
ISO certified.
Mr. Housley?
ISO certified. Thank you. Prior to the invocation, we like to recognize one of our former employees who passed away since our last meeting. Her name is Ellen M. Ramsey, and I know the family very well, and I got a few things to say about this fine lady and her fine family. Ellen Ramsey started teaching in 1955 at Fort Valley Elementary, teaching grades one through three in a single classroom. Ms. Ramsey then transferred to Stralsburg Elementary in 1964, taught there until moving to Sandy Hook in 1972, went into open and taught there until 1987, when she retired, teaching first and second grade as needed. Beyond the stories of Mrs. Ramsey's influence on young adults in Shandor County, her legacy was carried on by three immediate family members who were also educated in the Strals- and taught in the Stralsburg area. Jay Ramsey taught thirty-nine years at Stralsburg High School. Rosa Ramsey taught thirty-three years as elementary education teacher. Gary Ramsey, thirty-two years as middle school PE teacher. Ellen Ramsey, thirty-two years as elementary education teacher. And if you do the math, the Ramsley totaled a hundred and thirty-six years from 1955 to 2009. We need more people like Ms. Ramsey and her fine family. So let us bow our heads in a moment of silence before Mr. Barlow will give the invocation, please. Thank you. Yes?
If you join with me in prayer, please. Father, we do thank you for this wonderful county, this beautiful country you've given us, and we thank you for the people and partners in education in this room, in this county, including parents, stakeholders, teachers, and we thank you for each and every one. We convene tonight to ask you to give us wisdom, to give us civil discourse with one another, to give us empathy with one another's positions, and to give us courage to make wise decisions. We do bless those who are participating tonight, and we pray that the things we do will be bound to your glory. We pray it in your name, amen.
Amen. Let us honor the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dennis. Colleagues, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I so move.
Motion made by Mr. Barlow. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Keller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried by a vote of six zero. Ms. Shepherd, recognition for this evening.
So this evening, we would like to recognize a number of people. The first recognition on our list is on Monday, January the ninth of this year, our- one of our school buses was rear-ended, and we would like to thank all of the people who helped us with that situation and responded. We are so lucky to have such quick responders in our community. So after your name is called, please come up and get your certificate. Dr. Heingartner will be handing those out, and please remain so you can get your picture taken. So Mr. Lucas Long, our transportation supervisor. Ms. Don Miller, our bus driver. Dr. Holly Rusher, principal of Signal Now. Mr. Scott Schlitter, assistant principal of Signal Now, who I understand was very quick to respond. Ms. Melissa Foltz is not here with us. She's the principal of Stralsburg High School. Mr. Brandon Burkhardt, the assistant principal of Stralsburg High School. The Tomsburg Fire Department, Jason Scheid, the fire chief. Jesse Blah. Todd Dean. Chris Pangol. Rose Runyon. Shenandoah County Sheriff's Office, Mr. Russell Racey, deputy and school resource officer. Cody Dar, deputy and school resource officer. Shenandoah County Fire and Rescue, Jesse Clark, the captain. Alonso Charity, master firefighter. Nick Walls, firefighter and EMT. Thomas Funk, firefighter and EMT. Christina Compton, firefighter and EMT. Whitney Tusing, firefighter and EMT. Courtney Minion, firefighter and EMT. Stralsburg Fire Department, Brooklyn Henderson, firefighter and EMT. Middletown Frederick County Number Twelve also was dispatched, so we thank them. And then the Virginia State Police that worked the incident were Trooper Craig Klein, Trooper Nicholas Wakerman, or Wakeman, Trooper Michael Albert, Trooper John Custer, Trooper Marshall Brill, and Trooper Jason Street. So we like to thank them all for their service to our county and for our help. Mr. Housley, would you like to say anything about the newspaper article and from the bus incident about that state trooper?
Oh, I don't know if I still have that paper. I think I do. I think I mentioned it too at the last meeting. The state trooper, ML Albert, and the smile on this young boy's face says it all. And not only that, but all those EMTs that was on the scene. It could have been a disaster. So we thank you, yes, so. Thanks to everybody that was involved. And I know Ms. Shepherd and the school board appreciates when things like this turned out on a positive note, which it did.
It did. So I have a couple more recognitions.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
So it's not on our list tonight, but we would like to thank Ms. Westfall. She's a teacher at Sandy Hook Elementary School, third grade teacher, for her heroic actions, saving one of her students from choking. She performed the highlight group maneuver. So we are so thankful for her and her quick actions. This week-
I'd like to add to the public, Ms. Shepherd sends us Friday notes, and obviously that was on that week of the incident, and she, I know she was relieved, so from the board, I took it on my initiative and contacted Mr. Keller and Ms. Shepherd, and we gave her a bouquet of flowers in her classroom the Monday following the incident, and she teaches third grade. She's a very humble educator. I think she's taught for eleven years, if I remember correctly. She didn't know we were coming. She did not know we were coming. But when you, when the principal opened the door, the classroom was engaged in learning. As a teacher, I know when they were engaged. And not only that was, she had a learning, I mean, hearing impaired student, and she had a mic on to make sure that student was getting the same instructions of people that did not have that impairment. I was impressed. And not only does it go on there, it goes on in most of our classrooms throughout the county. Sometimes we get a bad rap about that, but we need to think about the positives. And if that was not a positive experience for Mr. Keller, myself, and Ms. Shepherd to visit her or whatever, so thank her and thank for many others. Yes, ma'am?
All right, so a few more. So this week is National School Counseling Week, and we would like to recognize our nationals, our school counselors for their tremendous impact on helping students achieve school success and plan for a career. School counselors are certified and licensed educators who help all students succeed. The combination of their training and experience makes them a unique and integral part of our schools. This week honors school counselors, provides a recognition for their position and helps them, which is a vital part of the educational process for all students as they meet the challenges of the 21st century. And I know we are celebrating with our school counselors tomorrow at Triplet Tech, so that's very exciting. Also, February twelfth through the eighteenth is National, is Virginia Kindness Week. The purpose of Virginia Kindness Week is to recognize that simple day-to-day acts of kindness enable our schools, communities, and state to be a kinder, safer, and healthier, more inclusive place to live, work, learn, and play. Teaching and recognizing kindness in schools and communities fosters empathy, builds community, reduces bullying, and nurtures a safe and welcoming environment. Schools across the division will be participating in the Virginia Kindness Week. And then would like to recognize our school board for their service. School Board Appreciation Month is February, and we would like to recognize our school board members for their dedication to public education. Our school board members serve their communities and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. In Shenandoah County, school board members must develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational issues impacting the entire community. They bear the responsibility for an annual budget of seventy-six point eight million, five thousand six hundred thirty-three students, and over a thousand employees in ten schools. Even though February is designated as the School Board Appreciation Month, our school board members are integral to the success of our students, so thank you so much. And then last but not least, we would like to thank our school board clerk and our deputy clerk for, and this is their appreciation, no, next week is their appreciation week, February fourteenth through the eighteenth, and we would like to recognize the school board clerk, Cheryl Jett, and deputy clerk Linda Hodges for a job well done. The school board clerk and deputy clerk are responsible for keeping accurate records of meetings and proceedings of the school board. They interact with the school board and the community to ensure the business of the school board is handled efficiently. We are fortunate to have such skilled and dedicated individuals serve in these positions. We are fortunate to have such skilled and dedicated individuals serve in these positions and we would like to thank them for a job well done.
Okay, moving on to six, the Shenandoah County School Board welcomes public comments during most regular meetings and during public hearings. School board members do not respond to public comments during the meeting or hearing. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes. Thank you. The board generally allows up to 60 minutes for public comments on agenda, non-agenda items. If there is a large number of speakers, the board may limit the time to fewer than three minutes. All comments should address a matter related to Shenandoah County Public Schools. The school board will not hear public comments that involve a complaint about an individual staff member, personal action, a student disbarred action, a complaint about an individual student or pending allegation. The school board expects each speaker to be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with other views. Speakers will address their comments to the entire school board and not to one individual board member or to the superintendent or to a staff member, nor to the audit. Speakers will not engage in personal attacks. The speakers were encouraged to sign up as you enter the room and we are ready to start. And our first one is Brittany Sevethon. Okay, I'm sorry.
Maiden name utter back. You might remember me.
Oh, I do. I had you in class. Well, you're up. I thought I recognized you. How many years ago was that been? Oh, I'm not supposed to talk to you. You caught me off guard. I apologize. Yes, ma'am. I think it's on. It's ready to go. There you are.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Brittany Sevethon. I'm a mom of two students at WW Robinson Elementary School and a social worker at Healthy Families Shenandoah County and most recently an organizer for Parents for Outdoor Play at Wixie Group. I'm here this evening to speak on an idea that many of us would like to see happen in all of our elementary schools. That is more time and opportunity for our children to play and learn outside, essentially more recess. I know I only have three minutes, but I want to start off with a real quick visualization. I want you to become your eight-year-old self and I want you to think about what it will be like to sit in a cinder block wall classroom, some of them without windows, bright lights, and eye strain at a screen or a piece of paper for a good amount of time. And just with that quick visual, it doesn't feel that great. This is the environment that we expect our children to learn and fully engage in, which they do. But it's also why many of them have issues focusing or sitting still, including my second grader. So now I want you to picture your eight-year-old self, using that pinned-up energy and going out into the fresh air, breathing in deep, feeling warm sunlight or cool wind, running and playing. Your senses awaken, concentration rebooted, anxiety shed. This is what outdoor recess provides for our children. Unstructured time to decompress and recharge. And while I'm describing a respite for children, it is not a break from learning, it is a part of learning. Where did you uncompromise or how to stand up for yourself? These things are hard to teach in a classroom, but they're easy to learn on the playground. In our school system, grades one through five are currently only getting 20 minutes a day of outdoor recess, weather permitting. So in the winter, some children are only getting 20 minutes a week outside. Many child development professionals, an impact study showed that there are so many benefits to recess, which I'm sure many of you already know, specifically outdoor play. Other neighboring schools like Garland Quarles and Winchester City, they have worked more recess into their schedule and they see the benefits. Student improved physical health, mental wellbeing, socialization, reduced behavioral issues, better immunity, increased attendance, and even improved academics. Teachers here agree with this. I sent out a survey last week to teachers and staff at WW Robinson. Many teachers responded and the results were pretty clear. 97%, so it was all but one, teachers stated that they would like to see their students get more than 20 minutes a day for recess. And 97% will support, can I keep going? Okay. Will support a mandate from the school board increasing recess time. And they left comments for how it can work in their schedule. According to the Code of Virginia State Board of Education, recess may be included in the required five-and-a-half-hour instructional time for elementary school, provided that it does not exceed 15%. So let's say we're asking for like 40, 45 more minutes. Total, that is only 13.6%. I'm hoping from speaking tonight, you will add this as an action item to next meeting's agenda so that the schools can begin to implement a plan as soon as possible. And real quick, we were, we were thinking about it and so we were asking that you enact a policy that all students in all grade levels K through five in Shenandoah County have at least two 20-minute recesses built into their day. So total 40 minutes. And for recess to not be withheld for academic or community reasons and be held outside unless severe weather. I also propose you approved provisions for less severe weather, including adding pavilions or having a donation closet for extra jackets. I also ask you that you consider helping each principal to implement a schedule or plan, whether that be through a known consultant or other means. We also need to consider extra playground equipment and finding additional spaces around the school so kids can play safely. I can be of help with this personally and I know that others in the community would spend their time helping in this effort. We need to do our part as parents at home getting our children outside, but the schools also need to do their part in what's best for our children and that's giving, giving them ample time to play through their bodies and breathe fresh air. So thank you for your time and consideration and I hope you continue forward with this.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is there? Gimpie?
Gimple.
Gimple.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Gimple and I'm here tonight regarding the book review policy. I'd emailed my thoughts to you all a few weeks ago, but after watching the work session, I wanted to follow up with a few comments before the vote this evening. Although I thought the work session conversation was mostly a success, I was a bit perturbed with one of the members' attitudes towards the issue, having commented that he had spoken with the librarian in question and the policy we have now works. It was also noted that this is part of a national movement and I heard a few comments alluding to the fact that it's unlikely that Shenandoah County Public Schools would have staff that push agendas or inappropriate material. The movement is nothing more than a large uprising of really ticked-off parents who are tired of schools not protecting our kids and allowing awoke agendas, woke agendas to be pushed. There would be no movement if we could trust our school systems. They should be able to do their jobs. And if you think it's not happening here in Shenandoah County, you're grossly mistaken. The majority of our staff are good, decent stewards of education and are giving their all to provide our our kids with the best education they can. But to think that there aren't those who have morally corrupt messages to protect our children is naive. Having been one of the two parents that challenged a book, I'm curious, how many of you asked me or the other parent about what our feelings or thoughts were or how the process was before you formed your opinion? I only got two emails back from my email to you. We were treated with a lot of disrespect. The librarian's viewpoint seemed to be the only viewpoint that mattered. I was called a bully and against human decency by the very same librarian for trying to protect my child and that was absolutely uncalled for. There was no impartiality when the librarian was soliciting support from staff prior to the meeting. I can assure you that the current system doesn't provide for a fair and just process. The best policy isn't to enact a procedure for better oversight before the books are purchased, but this policy is equally important. These children are already being exposed to so much that's not age-appropriate and we're watching mental health issues and suicides increase at alarming rates. It's our job as parents and educators to protect these kids to the best of our abilities. The world's soon enough going to take their renaissance. No one's asking for banned or burned books. We're asking for common sense, policy, transparency, and oversight. And I'm sure your minds are already made up prior to tonight's vote, but please know these two truths. You absolutely do have staff within your school system that is pushing agendas and inappropriate librarian materials are one of them. And because of this, myself and other parents will continue to fight long and hard to protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lucinda Airback.
Good eve-
Good evening.
My name is Lucinda Airback and I'm a resident of Strasburg and a librarian at WW Robinson, which explains my attire. Today was dressed like a tourist today. We do what we can to keep the students positively engaged. This is one way. And as a librarian, it is my pleasure to also help students by encouraging them to explore the world, real and imagined, through books. I'm here tonight to express gratitude to the board and the community for their engagement in the redesign of Policy KOB, commonly referred to as the Challenge Policy. It's not really challenging. We are aware that materials may not always be to some folks liking or desires and in-place procedure to review them is appropriate and welcome. I am particularly grateful for the boards and administrators, inclusion of the librarians, the professionals, and the policy recreation process. And a particular thanks to those of you who took time to talk with us to get a greater impression of how we do our job supporting all of our students. I look forward to a continued positive relationship with the board. Thank you and may you feel blessed and not stressed by your duties this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mike Ricker.
Good evening, board members. Good evening Superintendent Shepherd. First, I want to thank you all for putting yourselves out there and putting yourselves in this position. Some of you may or may not know, but I've decided to put my hat and ring in run for Mr. Keller's spot for the next term. That being said, it's forced me to get out into the public to get the signatures on the petition. And talking to the people, I've talked to kids, parents, grandparents. I've got to say I'm in shock. The biggest thing. I wrote this down, but I do better speaking from the heart, so I'm just going to speak from the heart. The stuff that I hear at these board meetings is not the stuff that I'm hearing from these parents and grandparents. These parents and grandparents are talking about bullying. They're talking about the inappropriate books in the library. They want to know about transgender CRT, what my feelings are on that. I gotta, I wish you guys could respond. I know you can't. But I'd like to know when some, when was the last time some of you guys met with the people that voted to put you up here? Because I can tell you if the voters see fit to put me on the board, the last thing I'm going to do is lose contact with them. You guys are supposed to be representing them and representing the best interest of the kids. And I just don't see that happening. I've prayed about this long and hard. My wife works in the school system. I've talked to teachers and the stuff that's going on in the school system. It sounds like the kids are just running them up. Kids trashing classrooms, biting teachers, kicking teachers, hitting teachers. I've got to say, I'm in shock. I'm like, the kids are getting away with this stuff? So I just ask tonight, as you look at this library book policy, I ask that you all pray, maybe individually, maybe as a group, and follow God's lead. I mean, after all, these are the kids. These are the, the people you are entrusted with. They're God's gift to their parents and the parents are trusting you all to make the right decisions. We're not asking for books to be banned. We're not asking for them to be burned. Heck, when I was a kid, when you went into 7-Eleven, you went into the grocery store, that kind of stuff was kept behind a plastic cover where you couldn't even see what it was. Now y'all are wanting to hand them out to kids in the library. I think we ask enough of our teachers. We don't need to be asking them to be, you know, psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers. Let the teachers teach. That stuff needs to be kept out of the school system. I just ask once again that you say a prayer before you vote tonight and let God lead your heart and lead your decision. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Ms. Whitney Pence.
Good evening, Ms. Shepherd, Chairman Housley, and school board members. My name is Whitney Pence and I'm a parent of two children at the Central Campus. I'm also an occasional substitute teacher within the county. Last week, my husband and I sent an email to Ms. Shepherd, Dr. Heingartner, the Principal of WW Robinson, the Assistant Principal at Robinson, and our school board members with the intent to bring attention to a second-grade teacher whose classroom instruction was interrupted by a student with a known history of misbehavior and a known history of aggression towards teachers and classmates. This student was displaying irrational and potentially harmful behavior. I'm here this evening to publicly commend Ms. Carrie Taylor for her swift action in calling for administrative help, clearing all of her students to another second-grade classroom for safety, de-escalating a crisis situation in her classroom, and then composing herself enough to return her students to the classroom and get them back on task. The parents of these students who were rushed out of their classroom were never notified. Behavior issues and lack of discipline were a problem in our entire school division and nationwide prior to forcing our students into virtual learning in 2020. It's now 2023 and it is time to stop using, we're coming out of a pandemic as an excuse for the daily disruptive and violent behaviors in our schools. In August of 2020, a central office administrator was at the front door of one of our high schools denying entrance for students who refused to wear a mask. I ask, where is this same diligence and administrative visibility when our teachers are continuously removing the same students from the classroom, radioing for help, reporting repeated aggressive behavior, and being physically hit? No teacher should be subjected to any sort of violence and neither should our students. By law, our classroom should be, should be a learning environment where students have the ability to reach their full potential free from violence, misbehavior, and disruptions. Instead of blasting out illegally crafted robo-call denouncing bullying and negative interactions, the message should have been our school district leaders ensuring the teachers and the parents that our principals have been instructed to hand out clear and consistent consequences, allow teacher participation when returning a student to the classroom after the student has been removed, follow up with a discipline referral, document all calls for help from the classroom, even if the incident is not defined by the state as reportable. And most importantly, have zero tolerance for violence against our teachers and their peers. When discipline is broken, nothing else in the school is well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Stephen Heisman.
Good evening, school board members. Ms. Shepherd, thank you for allowing me to speak a minute this evening. Back on that first speaker this evening, Marty, when you and I were eight years old, we was driving a two-cylinder John Deere tractor, wasn't we?
Probably so.
Couple things I wanted to touch on real quick. The weekly religious education here we got going on in the county. I myself cannot get enough of it. The education program is running steady and making a positive impact on the lives of the students that are attending. WRE will continue to grow one student at a time. And what's most important to remember about the WRE program as we have heard a little bit this evening about the bullying and roughhousing in the schools here and there. In the classes of the WRE, they try to teach respect to one another of the students. That's very important. Luke's Backpack, everybody's aware of the Luke's Backpack in the, the program and on the Southern campus, I am very honored that my Lutheran church out in the Hamburg area, Zion Lutheran Church is the, is the hub or the center point of where we house the food for, supply of the Southern campus and at council meeting the other- And at council meeting the other evening, we got a report of the Luke's Backpack for the month of January, and I have to say, I was overly impressed at the magnitude of the size of this program. Throughout the county, all three campuses, we have about 155 students that are receiving these bags of food. It's late in the week, like Thursday, Thursday afternoon, Friday, and they take that food home, and we know that they have nutritional food over the weekend. There's 12 to 14 different nutritional items in those bags of food, and a dollar value, surprisingly, has been put on each bag of about $11, okay? The month of January, $6,732 worth of food was distributed to these children out amongst the county, and I find that very remarkable. And what is most important to understand is Luke's Backpack is very, very, very strongly supported by the community, and that's what makes it work. So on then to this policy, I'm going to run out of time, I'm going to talk fast. On the policy that is in question here this evening, I learned a little bit more about it from last month. Parents should have the right to see and approve what books are being bought for the students in the public school system. This indoctrination that we have heard mentioned a time or two this evening from different speakers, this indoctrination of the children in the public schools is sweeping across the nation, and many parents throughout this country have had enough, and they're starting to stand up against it. One example is just recently elections out in the state of Iowa. Right there's a headline. The governor of Iowa takes on this woke indoctrination, whatever, however they come up with that name, with massive school choice victory. They're going through the systems and the CRT, and all of this indoctrination that we have heard about, they're getting rid of it. The governor of Florida, Ron DeSantis, stated as school was starting back in the fall, he said, "As students head back to classrooms this fall, I'm happy to clear up any confusion that the media may have about appropriate curriculum. Math, reading, and writing will be taught in our schools. CRT, sexualized content, transgender ideology will not be accepted or tolerated. The Florida schools will educate children, not indoctrinate them." So the question that we have here in Shenandoah County is the books that are in question here, how did they get into our school libraries? Who approved them and who bought them? And also, where did the money come from to buy that type of book that has got sexual adult content in that is available to students under 18 years of age? That is a very good question to get an answer to. Where did the money come from? Would you want to find the root of all corruption and such? The old saying is, follow the money. Now, I need to say very importantly, Shenandoah County has many, many, many excellent teachers and educators and administration. They really do, against the best of them in the state of Virginia. But if we have these types of leftist-leaning people in the school system that are trying to hide this evil to minors in plain sight, like was discovered a year and a half ago with Lime's Pride at the Southern Campus, then it's time to remove those employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Katie Godwin.
Sorry I don't have food for you. I've been to enough of these meetings where you can get cookies and milk and all kinds of good things. I'm just handing you more paper.
Thank you.
My thanks to Mr. Heischman for bringing up Luke's Backpacks. It is a wonderful program that is sponsored by Shenandoah Valley Lutheran Ministries and one which I've been honored to be part of for a long time. We are celebrating that we have a new executive director in P.G. Coverstone, who's doing a great job. And just to follow up with what Steve said, Mr. Heischman said, students can register for receiving Luke's Backpack bags through their guidance counselors at the schools, and our delivery people have reported back to me how friendly the staff, the folks, the receptionists, the administrators, the teachers are. When they show up with the bags, they're always greeted warmly, so I just think that says great things about our schools, especially on the Southern Campus. So what I handed you was our Spring Forward program. Again, I stand before you thanking you for the support. A special thanks to Ms. Shepherd for the support she provided, for Ms. Hodges providing a wonderful day, afternoon of boundary training for our volunteers, and thanks to Lucas Long and Kimberly Wilson, who have been working with us through the Transportation Department. And we are happy to report that with each day that has passed, the kids are arriving earlier and earlier, so that has worked out well. And it's just great to have them pile off the school bus into our social hall, and what you have before you then is the brochure for our program, and each day, Ms. Jane Perry provides a wonderful plan of the day with a theme for the day, and has fully versed our tutors in the different grade levels that they will be working with and the ways in which they can engage those students. So currently, we have registered 15 children and 11 volunteer tutors, many of whom are retired educators. And our registrations going forward are for second through fourth grade, but this particular semester, we did welcome back some of our former scholars. When Spring Forward ended in March of 2020, our kids experienced the same sudden stop to their education that they had in their schools as well, and we had to close our program totally. I'm so thankful for the imaginative ways in which the schools went forward, but we brought those kids back because we wanted to have good closure. So we do have some middle schoolers right now, and it's just going great because they're big sisters and big brothers to the younger kids that have registered. So many thanks for all your support. It's going great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Katie. Ms. Rutt, you want to have the floor now?
Yes, thank you. This letter was sent to me, actually sent to the board, just before we convene this evening. It says, "Tell all school board members, unfortunately, I am unable to meet the meeting tonight in Woodstock. Hopefully, you'll work and read my comments before the vote. I fully support having a book review policy in Shenandoah County Public School Libraries. It's important and the responsible action to take. As a student who was educated in the public school system, the books I found in my elementary, junior high, and high school libraries saved my life. As a matter of record, I was raped in the summer between third and fourth grades. It caused me great confusion, emotional pain, and some very serious trust issues that have followed me throughout my whole life. Young people, students, should not have to experience things like this, or should they be exposed to reading materials that are sexually explicit. They are not emotionally or even socially prepared for that kind of subject matter, and it's up to us adults to protect them in every way we can. I thank God every day for the librarians I had in school. They exposed me to the classics, which helped me to escape from my trauma. Gulliver's Travels, Frankenstein, Romeo and Juliet, The Deer Slayer, David Copperfield, and many others helped me through my pain. The biography of famous people that were in the library inspired me to keep going. We have to ask ourselves, what kind of education and legacy do we want to create for the public school students in Shenandoah County? One that pushes them to dream or one that causes them possible emotional damage? The right thing, the more responsible vote, is to have a book review policy in place. Thank you for your service to the citizenry and students of Shenandoah County. Best regards, John T. Crotec, out of Mount Jackson."
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak that did not sign up? Hearing none, we will move on. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Gutschall. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Rutz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It carried six, zero. Okay, going on to four. I will like to recognize Ms. Stratton about the annual child count for special education services in our county, please.
Good evening, Chairman Housley, Superintendent Shepherd, and members of the board. I'm here to present to you our December one child count. So first, we'll go over the purpose of the child count.
Under your folder.
It's on the other side.
Yeah. So this is the purpose for the December one child count. As you can see, the school divisions are required to report an unduplicated count of students with disabilities receiving special education on December 1st. It's for state and federal reporting under provisions of the Individuals' Disabilities Act, IDEA, Part B. So encompassing that is how we receive some funding and assistance from states for education funding, and it also incorporates our preschool grants. So who is counted in this December one count? As you can see, they must meet all three of these criteria to be counted. They have to have a current evaluation or reevaluation, have a valid individualized education program, which is the IEP, or an individualized or individual service plan, which is an ISP, by December 1st. They must also be receiving special education and related services on December 1st. So this is our December one count for 2022. As you can see, on the left side is the disability category. You can read down the different disability categories. In December 22 is what we reported out. The total students that we counted for IDEA is 899. Looking at the October 1 enrollment, and we did that because that's been consistent with the last five years, looking at October 1 enrollment, it was 5,751 students. So looking at that, we are 15.6% of our students are identified with a disability. This is the five-year trend. As you can see, disability category on the left, 2018 through 2022. As you can, as you will notice, if you would, look at the total enrollment October 1st for those five years. How it's fluctuated, not really that much when you look at it as a whole. You look at your percent of students in special education, again, we've been around 14 to 15%. Ideally, we should not be over 12% of our student population. And please note, this does not include our students that have a 504 plan. This is only students that qualify under IDEA. Questions?
Questions?
Yes.
Colleagues?
What is the difference between an IEP and an ISP?
Individualized Service Plan is for a lot of our students that are being serviced also, possibly in a private school that we provide services for, or they have a plan that they need that's specialized, that's not the IEP plan, not in our school. But we do service them so we can count them because they're in our county.
But they may be elsewhere.
Yes, they could be elsewhere for that.
Jennifer, can you remind everybody what unduplicated means?
That you cannot count the child more than once.
Even if they have a secondary disability or a tertiary disability, they're only counted
the one time under the disability category, and it would be the primary disability category that they would be tallied under. Thank you.
What classifies as a speech or language impairment?
So they have to go through, obviously, the criteria, eligibility criteria, and we have our professional speech-language pathologists that actually provide testing for them, and it could be articulation, for instance, that's the majority of our students, and so they would qualify to the criteria sheet. So the team would come back together and go over that and make a determination regarding the Virginia Department of Education criteria sheet for the speech and language. Thank you.
Give us some examples of other health impairment.
It could possibly be a student that has attention deficit that's impacting, but needing specially designed instruction. Behavioral concerns could also fall under that, that don't necessarily fall under the criteria of an emotional disability.
I'm going to ask you a question you can't answer.
Okay.
If you went back 10 years, 20 years, what do you think that number would be if we're saying it's 15.6% now of our student body? What do you think that number would be?
Well, I can tell you from 10 to 15, I don't know about here, but I can tell you over, in general, for Virginia, it was about 8%.
Eight?
Yes.
Okay, my question, I guess, is then, are we getting better at diagnosing problems or are more kids coming to us with problems? Are they two possible things?
I think they're both a possibility, absolutely. That I think we have definitely gotten better with the way that we are identifying students. We have better criteria, better understanding of disabilities and the impact and the education. Also, do I think that we are over-identifying at times? I absolutely agree that sometimes we do that because we want to do what's best for students, for kids, and we feel like that.
What's the answer for over-identifying kids?
So I don't know that there is really an answer for that. I think sometimes that we may be kind of quick to not give the child, that's a young child, a little bit of time to grow and to learn and to be able to develop that part of the learning process, I should say. There is a criteria, so we have to follow that criteria, and if you can answer yes to the criteria after looking at testing, then we're definitely going to identify. I think what we need to do when we go back to reevaluation is look at that criteria, reevaluate, not roll testing for three years, but reevaluate that student, and a lot of times we'll find that student may not qualify.
How often do you reevaluate kids?
Every three years.
Every three years, sure.
If need be. If we suspect another disability possibly, or we feel that, you know, maybe we need different testing, then we would actually bring that back to the table, eligibility.
What kind of disabilities or conditions fall under specific learning disability?
Dyslexia, processing, auditory processing, visual processing, dysgraphia, dyscalculia, anything like that would be.
Are all these students, these 899, we deal with the services in the county? We do not?
There are those.
They're, all of them are in the county?
They're in our, yes.
And we do not send any? I remember when I got on the board, I think we had one in Florida.
They're not counted in this count.
What's that?
They're not counted in this count. If they're outplaced in that use, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Outplacing? Yeah, some will, it just depends on if they're somewhere that may be their own LEA, we may still support and help write that IEP, but if they have their own LEA, then they're not counted under us, the local education authority, so it really depends.
So we still do have students who are outplaced, whether it be Grafton or Minnick or other locations?
Absolutely. And they're serviced, obviously, through, not our teachers because they're outplaced, but they have teachers, there are special education teachers that are servicing them.
I understand.
Obviously, we want to keep them here.
Yes.
Right?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because if we send them elsewhere... Because if we send them elsewhere, among other things, we incur the cost of that, is that correct?
It depends. Sometime they're parentally placed, so we do not. But we still have to service or have to write the IEPs for them. Other times, they may be through a manicure. They also could possibly be receiving services through the county, as in if they go to FAT, the family partnership team. And sometimes they will help with the educational or that they will pay for the educational services.
Do we provide programs such as therapeutic day services?
Not right now. I was told in the past that we have had that. We are looking to try to have an agency come in to help with that piece for the day treatment.
Now, typically, does that only administer to students with an IEP?
Yes. Yes, through ours. If it was going to be a special ed day treatment, obviously, you can have therapeutic and you have agencies come into schools and work with general education students also. But if it's a classroom, it would definitely be for that.
That was a Medicaid-funded initiative 10 years ago, and Medicaid stopped funding that at the same level that they were funding it. So that's why it kind of.
Well, and just to catch up everybody, therapeutic day treatment was a program that provided counselors in schools for identified kids. When I was working, wasn't necessarily special ed kids, kids that had behavioral problems. And it gave them a place to de-escalate, I think probably is the term. So, okay.
I've taught day treatment, so therapeutic day treatment, but it was through a special ed.
Right.
But absolutely, we do have, you know, counselors that come in and work with, you know, students that aren't identified necessarily with an IEP or other.
I know that the program here that we have that is pretty tough to sometimes have teachers with that endorsement. What is the, if you could pick a number of folks that we could hire or that would help with with covering these, these children, what would it be?
To cover for the students, like what we were talking about, that would need the therapeutic treatment?
Yeah, if you felt wonderful about the program, if you could feel wonderful about the program, how many more special ed teachers in, could you, would you have on staff?
So if we're looking at that, then I'd have to look at it as a whole. So I would definitely say that we would probably have to have two extra teachers in elementary school and middle school and high school probably could do one because you could do it in the classroom and you could rotate them in and out for that.
Okay, that's, that would, that would be helpful to you to have at least three other staff members in in that position, correct?
Per school.
Per school.
Per center, you know, the central campus would have, obviously, the, it would be two, one and one.
And that's just for TDT?
That's just for TDT, yes.
Not, that wouldn't be. Not what we really need for special education?
No.
Well, I think that's what Randy was asking.
I'm sorry, for.
She was, maybe I'm wrong.
No, I would love to know how many.
Special ed teachers?
Overall.
Overall, if you could, if you could have a wish list that, you know, we rubbed a lamp and poof, what would that number be?
And if I'm only looking at special ed, then I'd probably say four in the elementary school. I would say three in the middle school and more than likely two or three in the high school.
And at each campus, correct?
However, just knowing, I'm not sure, you know, how familiar anyone is with the RBT. Those are peer professionals that have been trained under a BCBA and that work with BCBA's, a registered behavior tech. They can do a lot of those supports in classrooms and things also. And it's a different schooling, a different education piece for that.
Is that a schooling or an education piece that requires a whole lot? I mean, we currently stick children in classrooms with teachers that do not have a special ed endorsement. We currently will outsource them to what's called the think room or a de-escalation type room with parapros that aren't trained either. So what are those, I mean, and I think I'd asked Mrs. Shepherd, you know, what is the, what's, what is it that we need to do to help us with these? Because, you know, when these kids aren't getting serviced, it's, it's not good for them, but it's not good for everybody else either in some of these categories. So, you know, is there, is that endorsement something that, you know, would take six months to get? Is that something we should consider as something we should help a parapro get? You know, I'm just looking at, at, you know, how to get you to those numbers and how to get these, these serviced the best way we can.
Well, looking at RBT and their training that they would need, they are trained through a BCBA, a licensed BCBA, which we have through licensed BCBA's.
Or certified behavioral analysts.
Or certified behavior analysts, yes, which we're lucky enough to have one in each campus. And so there's a certain amount of hours, I believe it's between 10 and 15, depending on the certification piece, that they certify them. And then they do the training with them and then they take the test. So it can be on job training. We actually have one that I'm familiar with now that has her RBT certification. That's a para. She's very effective.
Great.
And a great job.
Wonderful.
I think Ms. Stratton said about 10 or 11 positions. I, I started counting and then I lost count. Please remember, we, we failed to fill six special ed positions this year because there weren't qualified applicants.
Well, and that's what I mean, what do we need to do? Well, I mean, the other part of it is we don't want to chase those qualified out of that field, which is something we face across the board. I mean, I think Mrs. Hodges will tell us how many educators are leaving the field of education. And I can't imagine that we don't have special ed teachers going, you know, elsewhere or into just regular education to where, you know, the stress of dealing with some, with some students. So I'm just curious of, of, you know, what, I'm looking for solutions to, to, to help those out. I mean, you know, what is it that we need to do to invest for people to get back into those, you know, things? I appreciate you, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, information agenda. Ms. Shepherd will present the long-awaited 2324 budget.
You got a copy?
Oh, just mine? Thank you.
So, there it is. So board members should have a copy of the presentation in front of them. There are a few copies in front of Ms. Shep, if you would like to come pick them up for those in the audience. But we'll be going over this. You're welcome. We will be going over this and it'll be on the screen. So here's our fiscal year 24 recommendations. Here's an overview of what I will be talking about this evening. So our goals, considerations, which some of this will be a repeat from our previous meeting. We'll talk about budget priorities, talk about county technology services, our capital improvement plan, revenue summary. Then we'll have a summary, next steps, and then questions. So we'll start out with our division goals. And we always try to tie back our budget initiatives to our division goals. And you see our number one goal there is academic achievement and growth. Positive school climate and culture, family, engagement, community connections. The fourth one, we just talked a lot about recruit support and recruiting enthusiastic professionals and then have high-quality learning environments. So our considerations, we talked about this at the last meeting, our enrollment has declined over the last 10 years. We have a few more preschool students than we've had in previous years. And we have to develop our, our budget based on the number of students. So our fiscal year 24 budget was built on 5,425 students, which if you'll notice is about nine students less K-12 than we have this current school year. My information is based on the fall report. The information that Ms. Stratton just presented was based on the December report. So know that those numbers will be slightly off. Here's our birth rate. So if we look at our class, our kindergarten, anticipated kindergarten class for 2023, which will be this coming fall, we have a slight increase in the number of births here in Shenandoah County from last year to this year. So we anticipate we'll have a few more kindergartners than we had last year. The dark blue line is the birth rate and then the light blue line is the number of students who actually entered kindergarten five years later. You'll see our free and reduced eligibility has, there's not really a trend. It's been a little bit all over the place over the last eight, nine years. And then our English learners have increased slightly over the last eight or nine years. I do want to remind everyone that our lunches and breakfasts will be free for the next four years. So that was, we're in our, we entered the community eligibility provisions program. And that allows us to have free breakfast and free lunch for five years. So breakfast and lunch will continue to be free after this year for four additional years. We can't say that enough, so I'll continue to mention that. Our student population for students with disabilities on the left, you'll see that that's been slightly, you know, we've been increasing that over the last seven or eight years. And then our students with 504 plans are on the right. And that's kind of remained steady over the last four years. So then the budget priorities. So on Sunday, February 5th, the House and the Senate released their crossover. And both the House and the Senate had a 7% increase for, for teacher salaries. So the governor had, in December 15th or 16th, said, you know, a 5% teacher salary increase for fiscal year 24, which is this upcoming school year. The House and the Senate both said that they would like to see a 7% salary increase. So the recommendation is a 7% plus step, which will, is to the tune of $4.7 million. We want to look at our food service staff salary skills. So we want to re-benchmark those skills and there will be more information later in this presentation. Our food service staff at the very beginning are barely making minimum wage. So when you see the, the salary scale later in this presentation, you'll see that we tried to address that. We would like to give them a 7% plus step as well, and the cost of that would be $170,000. As you know, our health insurance continues to increase. Our utilization is above what we're spent, what we're paying Aetna. So, for example, in the previous year's experience rate is, was 12% more than what we're paying Aetna. So, for example, if our bill, if we use, if we were paying Aetna $100,000, they were paying out $112,000 for our experience. So that's not a good business model for Aetna. So they're gonna, you know, they're gonna want us to pay a little more money next year. We anticipate that increase is going to be 15%, which will cost us about $1.13 million. So not only is our health increase, health insurance increasing, but our health insurance is more expensive than Rockingham and Frederick County. So we would like to increase the employee plus dependent or spouse and $300 additional dollars a month. And then employee plus family, a $400 additional contribution from the school division for employee plus family. Fuel costs have increased significantly over the last few years. And that cost, oh, excuse me, is $150,000 anticipated. We would like to add two new CTE programs and the cost of that will be $330,000. The HVAC and OT, OT occupational physical therapy program would cost $150,000 for materials and supplies. And the salaries and benefits would be about $180,000. We have space at Triple Tech for both of those programs because we are moving the Massanut Regional Governor's School to Mountain View High School. And then the safety grant, each year we apply for a safety grant and we have been delighted to receive it over the last many years. Our local share, our local match for that is $62,500. And we anticipate we'll receive this grant again. And it has helped us by adding security cameras to our locations. We have been able to do secure door locks, we've been able to do things like that with that money. So we would like to continue to apply for that grant, but our local part of that is $62,500. So in front of you, you will see the proposed salary scale for our food service workers. So if you'll look, the yellow is what they're currently making. So I believe the minimum wage raised in January to $12 per hour, and that's what our beginning food service employee is making. And what we would like to increase it to, so this is to a restructure plus the 7%, so they would be making $14.43 an hour. And then, you know, it, it would increase for years of experience. Please interrupt me if you have questions or thoughts. Cafeteria manager, same thing with that. And so just to commend our food service employees, this is a self-funded program. And we had, we are only allowed to keep three months worth of revenue or expenditures in our bank account for our food service fund. We had over eight or nine months of revenue. So the state says you have to spend a million dollars. And so one of the ways that we're spending the million dollars is to increase employees' pay because people make a difference. So that's, that's one of the ways we're funding this. And food service is self-funded, so what they make is what they're able to spend. So here's our health, this is really hard to read, but here's our health insurance information. Most of our employees, if you look at the second set of information right there, most, goodness gracious. Most of our employees are on this band right here, Aetna 1000 with comprehensive dental. So the majority of our employees take that insurance plan. So at employee only is pretty, you know, this is not bad, $50 a month. But when you look at employee plus family, that's $1,249, which I would consider unaffordable. So if you look at our health insurance premiums compared to Frederick County and Rockingham County, and I know all three of our plans are different, we have Aetna 1000, Frederick County has Blue Cross Blue Shield, Key Care 25, and then Rockingham has Key Care 20. But these are the closest that we had to compare. So at employee only, we're, you know, we're knocking it out of the park. Our, our employees pay less than both Frederick and, and Rockingham. But then that's where we fall down after that. So you'll see employee plus child, $544 compared to, to their rates. And, you know, the negative thing about putting this out there is that our employees can see this and they can say, oh my goodness, I could make a little more money if I go to Rockingham or Frederick County. But hopefully they'll want to stay with us because we're, we're trying to do something to, to correct it.
Did you, I think at the last board meet or the last work session, I had asked regarding, I think Cindy mentioned the contributions. We also talked about the, the rates, you know. I reached out to Brandon Monk in Frederick County. They're going to, they're going to have the exact same conversations because I think they're going to be switching providers, looking at an increase of like 10%. And then the whole Valley Health debacle is going to play, you know, come into play with that. But you mentioned we couldn't go out, I mean, that really at this point, going out for RFP to see what was going on is, we ran out of time?
Right. No, we could go out for RFP, but realize that Blue Cross Blue Shield and Valley Health, I don't know where they're at in their negotiations, but that would knock them out if they haven't negotiated a contract because many of our providers are, many of our teachers go to Valley Health organizations for their healthcare. And there's only one other organization besides Aetna that actually services our area.
So I'm curious, is Frederick County going to allow them as far as services? Because, you know, us and Shen, us and Frederick are using the exact same health provider.
Right. But they're going out for bid this year, mainly because, and I'm not going to speak for Frederick County, but mainly because of the Valley Health Blue Cross Blue Shield lack of contract.
So these numbers are, may not exactly be true as far as what they're going to be looking at in their current budgets.
Right. So they're true for this year.
They're true for this.
This is this year's premiums. So let me, you prompted me for the next slide.
Okay.
Thank you. Here is what we pay versus what they pay for each of the plans. So Shenandoah County Public Schools, School Board pays $762 for employee only. Frederick County pays $534 and Rockingham pays $310. And you'll see how that, you know, is for all of the different plans.
So given the fact that we are spending more money, we're actually contributing about the same across the board. It's, it's not, well.
There's not a significant difference.
Correct. We just have more expensive insurance.
It's not more expensive insurance. We have higher claims.
But we don't know that we actually have higher claims than the other two counties. Cause there's, there's no way that folks in Shen, in Frederick and in Rockingham are not experiencing cancers and health, mental health issues. There's just, I find that difficult.
So there's more employees at both of those. So we're about half the size of both of those organizations.
Do you think equality, quantity is playing a part?
Possibly. So we will have our health consultant do a presentation in the next couple of months. So you can ask them all of these questions because they serve other counties and school divisions. So they, they have a wealth of information.
Or is he from Aetna?
He is from McGriff. McGriff.
It's a consulting.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I think they spoke last year. Any other questions about healthcare? So we're asking for some increases, but we also, you know, said, okay, what can we decrease? And you'll see the very top one is replace already. We currently are using PALS, but we'll need to find something for math. I'm not sure if that'll be IXL math, but we'll have to do something with math. So that'll be a $60,000 savings. And then we are also reducing nine and a half positions through resignation or retirement. I do not want anybody to think that they're going to lose their dog, but through resignations or retirements, we're going to reduce nine and a half positions and that'll save a tune of a little over $700,000. We're looking at our class sizes to determine what positions we don't have to fill if they become vacant. And so our, you know, our optimal number is between 20 and 24. So, you know, if we have class sizes of 15, we may not replace a teacher of class size of 15 if there's multiple teachers in that grade, if it brings it up to 20. If it would take it up to 30, we're going to replace that teacher because we want to, we want to remain around, you know, 15 or, excuse me, 20 to 24. And then the capital improvement plan, we're going to remove Edgelog, which was 269,000. That is a great program, but unfortunately, you know, the, the cost is expensive to, to initially implement, but then also the reoccurring cost is something that we can't afford at this particular time. It's great for safety of students. It's great for knowing where our students are, but I think at this point it's, it's something that's not affordable for us. So county technology services in fiscal year 2020, which was 2018-20, the technology services for the county and the school division were combined. And all of the county technology services are managed by school staff. The colors in his, in his group do that. And so the increase for fiscal year '24 is $1,359 and the county just transfers that money to the school division. And Ms. Dunn, if I misspeak or whatever, please correct me. So our capital improvement plan, this is a, a repeat from our last budget meeting. I just want to show where we have cross Blue Edgelog. And so that brings, you know, the total for transportation down to 1.3 million. And then we calculated the total for 3.157 million. Okay. And this is where I get to give some, some news you have not heard before. So we have just finished our audit with Robinson, Farmer, Cox and Associates. Thank you. And we are going to return, okay, this first number is not the, the real number of what we're going to return to the county. We are going to return 5.439 million. However, of that 5.439 million, 1.65 million is in special budget, so we'll ask that to be returned to us. And then $220,000 for softball lights, which we're just finishing up that, that construction now. So we will be returning and not asking for it back, 3.56 million dollars in fund balance. So we are good stewards of our money. And where some of that money came from was from us not filling positions last year. And we used a lot, some of our peers' money for things that we would have spent out of operations. So, you know, when you think about, we're returning 3.56 million and we're asking for 3.1, oops, 3.157 million, you know, that, that, there's a difference of about $400,000 there. So Ms. Dunn will do a presentation on the fund balance probably, I think it's the March meeting, isn't it? Okay. Yeah, in a couple of weeks. And then if you wanted just to have a one-page summary of our capital projects, I updated this to exclude the Edgelog. So some more information about capital improvement. The county borrowed 4.2 million dollars fiscal year '23 and we use that for fiscal year '22, fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. We also use almost 3.7 million in CARES funds to do some capital improvement projects. So over 7.9 million has been dedicated to capital improvement projects over the last two years. But when you have buildings, the age of our buildings, roofs need to be replaced, HVAC units need to be replaced and that, you know, and that doesn't go away. So we need to take care of our facilities so that we can continue to use them. I know on the CIP plan, you'll see where we've, some HVAC units have outlived their useful life. They're 40 years old. I don't know how many homes have a 40-year-old HVAC system. So, you know, we take really good care of our stuff and we try to be good stewards of the money. So just wanted to, the fourth bullet there is in the fiscal year '23, the governor's budget included 2.2 million dollars for school modernization. We're working with a architect right now to redesign the entrances at our elementary schools. So just know that, that they're working on those plans now. So we should have an update from them in the near future to make sure that they have secured entrances at all of our elementary schools. And then here, this graphic over here to the right is, you know, the fiscal year, the CIP requests for fiscal year '24 through '28. This next slide is the funding history. And you'll notice that fiscal year '23, we were, but we asked for zero because we were, we were using CARES funds and the money that the county borrowed to do our CIP projects. And this year we will ask for 3.157 million. And another thing to note, the school debt service, then the county pays, drops off the school year '24, so coming up, a little over $2 million. So that's $2 million that the county was paying for the, I believe it was the renovation of the high schools. So revenue summary, this just highlights a few of the budget amendments from the governor's amendment on December the 15th, the House that was released on February the 5th and the Senate that was released on February the 5th, crossover day. So the state's revenue for the school division will be somewhere in between all three of these. So the, we should have more information by the end, not by our next meeting, but by the end of February, because that's when the General Assembly concludes. And you'll notice the second row there, hold harmless for tax miscalculations. So that was really good news for, for, for us. And it's included in both the House and the Senate amendments. So here's expected. We are supposed to receive a budget count tool today. Have we received it yet, Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Yes. So we're supposed to receive a budget count tool today with the state's anticipated revenue that breaks it up. We should see the House, what the governor, governor's amendments were, the House's amendments and then the Senate's amendments. We have not received that yet. So we should have a better idea. So this is, you know, this is our, our best calculations. And you can see the state, you know, we anticipate about 2.7 more from the state. Federal will remain about the same. Other county operation, this is, you know, this is, this is the number that we're going to ask the county for. It's 1.9 million, 1.95. And then 3,157,400 CIP. And that will fully fund the things that I highlighted earlier, which I think you're going to see here in a minute. I know you will. Here's the budget priorities. I think there are over two slides here. So the operating budget and the cost. Food service budget and the cost. County technology budget, capital improvement projects, and then reductions to budget at the very bottom. I did not include the Edgelog because I just decreased the capital improvement project number. So I did not include that in the reductions to budget.
What do we have in CIP, in CARES act funds? We still have any of that left?
We do.
I mean, it's, which one of these pots is that in?
So that's not reflected at all in here. That will be reflected in, I assume it's in here.
It's not going to be in there. That's in the special budget because it's all federal funded. It doesn't have anything to do with what we're asking the locality for or anything like that. So you'll see that when the budget book comes out.
Okay.
Which will be February the 23rd.
So we still do have some funds left?
Yes, we will be allocating funds this year and we are carrying forward some funds.
So one of the things in the Senate budget is $1,000 retention bonus for instructional and support staff. So the state will give us $660,000 if this makes it through. Will give us 660,000. That costs us a little over a million dollars. So last year we used $340,000 worth of CARES funds in order to fully fund that. So that, you know, those are some of the things that, you know, they'll fund their portion. The state will fund their portion and then we have to come up with the rest.
For the non-SOQ positions?
Yes. So here's some, here's some dates. We're here February the 9th, September 5th. February 23rd, we'll have the public hearing. It will be a budget work session. You will have, we will have our budget book available for that meeting. School Board will approve the budget on March the 9th. We'll have a work session with the Board of Supervisors on March the 16th at 1:00. We will, the Board of Supervisors will establish the tax rate for budget and advertisement on March the 21st. And they'll have a public hearing and then they'll have a budget adoption, tax rate and budget adoption on April the 18th. And then the school board will get one more opportunity to look at the budget on April the 27th. And then hopefully we can issue contracts to our teachers in, in the first of May. Questions? It's a lot of information. I know it's my favorite time of the year. I think it's Angie's favorite time of the year, so.
So, uh, what I've heard from you this evening is we're going to ask the county for, for about 700 and some thousand less?
So no, we're going to ask them for 1.95 million for our operating budget and 3.157, 1.7 million for capital. But we're giving them 3.5 million from our fund balance from last year that we have left over from last year.
So that, anyway, we'll discuss it at the end of the month. Any more questions? Thank you, Ms. Shepherd and staff. Okay, moving on. Action items. Six one, policy KLB-LB. Do you hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve version four of policy KLB slash LB.
Motion made by Mr. Keller to approve draft number four. Do you hear a second?
I second that.
Second by Mr. Barlow. Discussion.
Yeah, you know, what this is, it's an iteration of what we discussed in the January work session and later reviewed or revised by Mr. Barlow and myself. Well, I don't think that any plan or policy holds the, the mantle of being perfect. I believe that this effort combines the, the need to, and the responsibility to empower our parents to question what's on our library shelves with the professional judgment of our staff. So I do think it does that. It in no way is a call to question everything, nor is it, nor is it a mandate to leave all as it is. It is at its core, an agreement to ensure that our libraries and media centers provide an appropriate and responsible selection of books and other media to our students. It is nothing more, nothing less than that.
Okay. Ms. Ritz?
Um, I'll be honest with you, I think it's great. And I applaud you, and I applaud Dennis, um, for coming together and working on this. When I initiated this eight months ago, this is somewhat, somewhat similar of, of what I had in mind. I am saddened that, um, it's taken eight months to come up with something. We changed the name of the school in eight days. Um, so, yeah, these are library books, this is intended to give parents, um, some transparency and some say in what their kids are reading. And, um, you know, we're here to protect the minds of kids, not, not necessarily that we're here to, um, the word indoctrinates come up a couple of times, but some things are just not age appropriate. And, um, I wanted something a fair, that's fair across the board, I realize, as Cindy made a comment at our last meeting, that, you know, things such as the Bible will come up, um, and could come up, or is come up. Um, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with a fair and, um, you know, fair and, um, transparent policy. I think our parents deserve that. They pay for this, we're sitting here talking about budget. I mean, sh- all of Shenandoah County, at some point, when it comes down to the end of the line, is going to, um, fund our, our requests. And they should have a say-so on how their funds are spent. So, um, I think you did an excellent job. I, I do. I, I think, and I applaud the both of you for, for coming together and, and coming up with version four. I was, um, I was pleased with it. So thank you.
Mr. Gutshau?
I would also like to thank Mr. Keller and Mr. Barlow for coming together and working on this policy. There were some different ideas floating around, and I appreciate that you two, with our input as well, put some ideas together, made this work. Um, I, it's nothing more than, you know, a common sense policy, in my opinion. So I do appreciate what you all have done, taking the extra time to work on it. Clearly, this has taken a long time, as Ms. Brandy, Ms. Rutz said, um, eight months plus. So it's time that we get it, you know, moving forward. And again, you know, from myself, I appreciate the time that you, you took to work on this. It's, uh, like Ms. Rutz said, it's a well-put-together policy, and, um, I think it covers the basis, and it has compromise in it, which I appreciate.
Ms., uh, Walsh?
Um, I too appreciate the work of Mr. Barlow and Mr. Keller, um, to come up with a policy that's more acceptable and somewhat more concise. It's, it's not perfect, as Andrew said, I still have some concerns, I have to talk about that one. But it's workable, and our librarians have said it's workable, and that's what matters. I think as long as we continue to respect our librarians and treat them as professionals, um, and realize that this document may be, may be changed again, um, depending on what comes down the pike. It's my understanding that as of yesterday, the only library bill, bill, library book bill that's still alive, um, in the General Assembly is one about a model policy on library books. So we may be revisiting this sooner rather than later, but for now, it's a good document, it's acceptable, and, um, I appreciate your work on it.
Mr. Barlow?
I think the important thing about this policy is, we recognize the right of stakeholders, especially parents, to be involved actively in a review of materials that are in the school. We've already passed one policy for curricula, and this was the one, the twin to that, actually part of the family of this policy grouping that will allow, um, parents to, um, and other stakeholders, including teachers, to be able to, um, to bring these, uh, issues forward and to be reviewed. Uh, we have streamlined the appeal process from two complex committees to one. Uh, we have hopefully de-stigmatized, uh, a citizen wishing to exercise this review. Uh, we've taken the principal out of the line of fire by not putting them in a position of being accused of influencing the outcome of the review. We provided teachers with a sense of empowerment and professionalism by, uh, by being able to be part of this system. We have tapped into the, um, our senior administrator staff to monitor and help, uh, run this. Uh, we have included the possibility of subject matter experts to weigh in on the process. We have listened to the librarians, uh, and actually created a, uh, a compromise along the way whereby many of their concerns were met and included in what we did. But in the last analysis, the transparency to our community is, is to me what is so important about this, this policy, uh, and, uh, I strongly endorse it.
Okay. I reckon I'll, I'll say, go last. Um, we mentioned about the Bible. And that is gonna be the first book that's being challenged by this policy. And, uh, yesterday, I visited four librarians, and I talked to them about the policy, and I got some highlights on the appeal on the Bible that the committee at, uh, the school level, then eventually, we'll go to the, the review committee. And here are some of the things, Pastor Katie, you can probably speak more to this than I am. One of the concerns in the Bible is that, uh, reference Lot's daughters got him drunk and raped him to get them pregnant. Uh, human sacrifice, Abraham was tested to sacrifice Isaac. The song of Solomon had sexuality throughout. And the Israelites were told to kill all the men, women, and children, and the nations they conquered. I mean, that's in the Bible. And I would not have thought that I would have to deal with this policy, and one of the sacred books that I was brought up in, and the Holy Bible, is gonna be questioned and to take down from our public school libraries. And it may withstand the challenge. I hope it does, but that's, that's it. And the other thing I will say about the, and all about the librarians, they need to see us. They wanna hear from us. And yesterday, I took about thirty minutes and talked to four of them, and they're supportive of the policy. And when they said that to me, I want to support the policy. But, as one of, uh, my friends that I had breakfast with, uh, superintendent, made this statement, who majored in social studies, a lot more intelligent than I am, made this statement at breakfast, and I'll never forget it. History has not looked kindly on societies that have banned the books. You can interpret that wherever you want. And that resonate with me. But anyway, um, anything else? Question? I mean, a roll, roll call, please.
Before we do that, we should be clear on what the term banning means.
What's that?
We should be clear on what banning means. We're not banning the books, we're just not offering them. We're gonna discuss that.
I'm just quoting the person.
I, I understand, I understand. I understand. But we should use correct terminology, and I appreciate you, thank you.
But I appreciate the gentleman sharing that with me. Roll call vote.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gutshau?
Yes. Yes, no mic, but sorry.
I have two, if you want one of mine.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. House?
Yes. Boat carried, six-zero. And I'd like to commend, uh, uh, Mr. Keller, Mr. Barlow for getting the compromise that we just voted on. Moving on, personnel. Do I hear a motion to approve personnel?
I move that we approve the personnel, let's just present it.
Motion made by Ms. Walsh, right?
Yep.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Keller. Uh, discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Gutshau?
Yes.
Ms. Rutz?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. House?
No. Okay, moving on to superintendent, uh, muster reports. Ms. Sheppard, do you have anything to add here?
I do not, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Any questions about the muster reports? The attendance is about consistent, in the low nineties?
Wish it would be better.
Of course. Okay, moving on. The end is near. Uh, board member comments. Who wants to go first? Or should I just do it at random?
I can go first.
Okay, Ms. Rutz?
Um, again, I just wanna thank my colleagues for working together on that, um, the policy that we just passed. I, um, look forward to starting to craft, um, a policy that will, um, put some guidelines in place on what we, um, initially purchased prior, purchase what we want, um, to be in our schools. We are discussing the budget, and, um, there, I did some research the other day, and, um, was passed this, um, bit of code that I thought was, um, important. And since the General Assembly and the Board of Education believe that the fundamental goal of public schools of the Commonwealth must be to enable each student to develop skills that are necessary for success in school, preparation for life, and reaching their full potential. The General Assembly and the Board of Education find that the, the quality of education is dependent on the provision of, one, the appropriate working environment, benefits, and salaries necessary to ensure availability of high-quality instructional personnel. The appropriate learning environment designed to promote student achievement. Quality instruction that enables each student to become a productive and educated citizen of Virginia and the United States of America, and the adequate commitment of other resources. In keeping with this goal, the General Assembly should provide for supportive fu- public education set forth in Article Eight, um, Section One of the Constitution of Virginia. We talk about all the time, um, pay. We talk about benefits. But I think where we're missing the market is environment. Now, I look at the founding fathers when they wrote the Constitution, and I, I sometimes wonder if, um, and I, I feel fairly confident that freedom of speech and, and freedom of press, those things came first. And of course, I'm a believer of, a strong believer of the Second Amendment, um, which supports our right to do first, I mean, to do second. Now, um, they came second. I don't know when they crafted this, um, if it was thought out that working environment comes first, and should be a big, um, a big thing, benefits and salaries in that order. But, um, I would like for this, this board to start considering, um, what we need to do to, um, improve the working environment, um, for our teachers, and the educational learning environment for our kids, not all, I mean, not just part of, all. So, um, I think that that's something that, um, you know, so, a wise woman told me today that, um, you know, we don't have, um, um, you know, educate, um, quality teachers just beating down our door to get into this county, and that's a shame. We have such a great thing going on here, or could be. So, um, we ought to retain the ones that we have. And that may not be tossing, um, every dime at them, it could be listening very closely, processes, putting processes in place that protect the student and protect a teacher. And, um, just having some open dialogue, but looking at what we're doing and what we can accomplish. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Keller?
Well, I guess, to piggyback on, on that, I, I would, again, this is my opinion, so take it for what it's worth, but I do think that ninety-five percent of our students do, do the right thing. And I think the vast majority of that ninety-five percent do it without being asked to. Now, at least five percent that are in this, this group, it, it's, and I'd say about half that five percent, you gotta tell them multiple times to do the right thing, but they'll do it. And so that leaves, uh, a, a group of students that don't do the right thing, whether it be habitually or in single incidents or, or what, what have you. But those are the ones that are wearing out teachers. Those are the ones that are, uh, driving our, our administrators crazy. Those are the ones that we are spending a, a vast amount of resources on. But I, I would, I would say this, that, that public schools are, at, at a basic level, are just a miniature copy of our communities. They're snapshots of, of what, what's in the mirror of, of, uh, of our, of our homes. And, um, I think you can see this if you scan the paper, and you see the police plotters. And, and we should, we should remember that our schools aren't immune, uh, to, to misbehaviors, and neither are our communities. And the difference, uh, is simple, yet I think represents the greatest intervention that, that we, we have for our students. And, and that is this unique ability that we, as educators, have to recreate those kids. You know, fashion them in a way that, that's both respectful and just, and appreciates the law, appreciate the things that are going on, teach them the importance of understanding that critical relationship of cause to effect, and, uh, provide lessons that encourage our students to predict outcomes and consequences. Those are things that I think are really important. And, and whether that kid is, is, is part of, uh, the, the child count that we, we talked about earlier, or is just, you know, a, a, a typical kid that, that's coming to us, remember that there's some, there's, in many cases, there, there's, there's some paths that, that, they did not get that way by accident. But part of our job, part of our job is to, uh, is, is to help straighten that out. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gutshau.
I'll have anything to add.
Okay, Ms. Walsh?
Um, a couple of things, I haven't said much the last couple of meetings, so, um, I think, I think we all agree that student success and well-being is at the top of our priority list. Mr. Barlow said a couple of weeks ago, his mantra about discipline, um, and I agree that discipline is part of it, but, but student success and well-being is what we're here for, and the best indicator for student success is high-quality teachers. And, um, relationships matter between students and teachers, so keeping the good ones is really, really important. So, you know, I agree with Brandy, it's about environment, it's about pay, it's about health insurance. Um, we need to make sure that teachers and staff are respected and, um, appreciated. This other thing is something I've been wanting to say for a while now, um, with all the talk about parental rights, I'm a parent, I still have kids in the school system. Along with parental rights come parental responsibilities. And, um, whether it's library books, or behavior, or drug use, it can't just be the school system, it's gotta be the parents. The parents have gotta be involved. Parents do have access to the books that are in our libraries, what their students check out, what they have on hold. Like I said last time, we even get notifications now of what our kids check out, so there's nothing being done on the sly in that, in that regard. So parents do have a responsibility to check in with their teachers, check in with the librarians, make a deal with the librarians, I don't want my kid to check out this kind of book for this author or whatever. Just be involved. That's it for General Assembly. A couple of things, um, all three high school swim teams did amazingly well, um, this year, and all are sending teams to states, which is really exciting. I think Strasburg Girls and the other two schools are sending boys teams. Wrestling, especially Strasburg is doing really well. District choir and band, uh, students are doing amazing. Our district choir performance is this week, I think band was last week. Um, and all the kids who make it into district choir... Um, and all the kids who make it into district choir, band, orchestra, they then can try out for All Virginia. Um, so that's a really high honor when you get, um, when you get to All Virginia. Not, not very many kids go there, but fingers crossed, well, we find out tomorrow choir. Um, musical season is about to start, Once Upon a Mattress is the first one at Central. It is next weekend, uh, the sixteenth through the nineteenth. And then Strasburg and Mountain View tend to do them later in the season. Page County's showing, or presentation of the Addams Family is this weekend. And if you would like to see a nice auditorium, go see a musical in Page County, they have two. Um, and I think that's it, thank you.
Mr. Barlow?
First of all, I, I wanna make the observation of the last year and a half, two years since I've been coming to meetings before I was a school board member and now, that I have been moved by the, particularly the mothers who have come here and told us the challenges they're facing, uh, with their kids in school. And I think, I think Cindy's point is really well taken that it's a, it's, and Mr. Keller as well, that it's a, it's a society-wide issue that we're dealing with. Nevertheless, the, um, the passion and the energy that those moms have shown in coming forward, especially, we've had three really good examples tonight of, uh, young moms who have, made their way into the system to make an impact in a positive way, but an aggressive way. And I think that's extremely healthy. And, uh, I, um, I want those folks to know that we on the board, read those emails, ponder them, uh, and, um, consider them. And, uh, I'm, I, as I say, I, there's, there's not a group I think I'm more moved by than that group and, uh, seeing that kind of concern and energy and willingness to participate and get involved is, uh, is encouraging to me. As far as the, the policy, it's taken us a long time to get to this policy. I wanna give a, um, particular shout-out to, um, uh, to the superintendent staff and, uh, Dr. Jennifer and others who have helped us with, I think, which is a really good, matrix-type situation that helps us figure out what policy requirements are and gives us a, a blueprint for a way ahead. It was kinda like making sausage, but I, in a democracy, that's what you do. And I, I think, I think we, I think we did it. So thank you for the staff and for, uh, and for our, our school board to work on this. Uh, and including the librarians who made, I think, which was, which was unusually, not unusual, but it made very good, uh, impact and considerations for us. Uh, I do, uh, make the point, however, that just having a review, uh, committee is not enough. And, uh, three members at our last work session talked about the need to have, uh, a better handle on the criteria by which us, uh, library materials are selected. And I think that not only protects us further, but it actually gives principals and librarians, uh, a way to handle this almost insurmountable challenge that they have now of being under the gun for keeping sexually explicit and other kind of inappropriate materials out. So we can do them as well as ourselves a, a service by taking a look at the front end of this issue of library materials. Um, I will say very quickly in passing that I, uh, I do endorse the point that Mrs. Ruths made that, um, uh, when, when somebody tells me that we're in the business of book banning, I got my hand on my wallet, because they know that we're not banning any, any books. Anything that you wanted to see or hear, and you can see on, uh, YouTube or Books-A-Million or anywhere else, uh, and generally with some Hollywood celebrity reading it. Uh, so it's not like this stuff is not available if somebody wants, wants, wants to find it. So, um, you know, it, when I go to the store and I decide I'm gonna get music instead of Captain Crunch, I haven't banned Captain Crunch, but I've just selected something that would be better for, for my family. So that's, that's the way I look at it, is selection and de-selection. Finally, um, well, no, not finally, sorry, I have two more things. One is that, um, I will continue to emphasize, uh, discipline and decorum, because I think we've all realized it's kind of got a little out of kilter over the last six years for various reasons. And it's hard, it's hard to take license back when you've granted it. It's hard to do that. It's painful, but it's necessary. And I do credit the school system, I think, for owning up to it and taking that challenge on. And we're part of that challenge, and I, I think that's, it's tough, but it's necessary. Uh, and I look forward to, uh, making input on, on, on that, in that, that round. And, um, in that regard, uh, the, the, I, I like what, um, Ms. Walsh said about, about the teacher and the key role, the, the, uh, my father would call it the fulcrum, my father was an engineer, and he believed that, that fulcrum, everything balances there. And the teacher is the fulcrum as far as I'm concerned. Uh, and that balance occurs right there with the teacher in the middle. So I do believe that, um, that the teacher is the key. I don't believe that high pay is the only answer. And I'm gonna give you a short example of how I know it's not. Uh, I mentioned my experience as a teacher at the last work, um, meeting, and I'm just reminded that that was a long time ago, and maybe it's not relevant. But I will propose to you that it is relevant. Uh, as, as a teacher, I taught four different preparations in one day, taught five classes, and one period off, and the other period I was assigned to go to bathrooms, get the guys out of there who are smoking. I was given a job to go to the dances, keep the guys in their houses and going and drunk, or getting drunk before they left. Uh, and I was given a, an office in a book room with a spare desk that I was able to find. And, um, I didn't feel particularly respected, uh, by my administration, uh, even though I volunteered to teach those extra courses. I was very happy to participate in book review committees and curriculum writing assignments. I coached for nothing. They're paying me now, but not much, nineteen cents an hour, I think, is what we decided to date, nineteen cents an hour. But it was, um, wonderful, because opening minds is a wonderful thing. Uh, I was attacked by a student who gave me about three stitches in my left arm. Uh, he was back in school before the end of the day. I've seen this happen, I've had to go test that, this was Eastern Baltimore County. Uh, I hung around until my review came in, and there was a big space for my review, and the review, I will never forget it till the day I die, was after I had done all that, that year, I was, I was rated as a successful contributing teacher. That was, that was the sum total of what I was told and given a mediocre rating. And I decided, uh, I can put up with the abuse, but I don't think I can put up with the disrespect. And, uh, we have to do whatever we can to, um, to provide an atmosphere where, uh, teachers are felt, are respected. And the most important word I think in their lives is professionals. They wanna be treated as professionals, and we should demand that they act as professionals. Objectively, passionately about learning, but not being provocateurs or not as being propagandists, but as being dispensers of wisdom and encouraging those who want to learn. So, um, I have a particular warm spot in my heart for all the teachers who are going through some of the problems that the parents are going through and that we're going through in our society. It's not easy, and we have different frames of reference. But I think there's a positive attitude about how we can get out of this dip, if you will, and get, and get back into, uh, back into the swing of things. But I would once again, um, emphasize that it's not just raising the salaries of the teachers that's gonna do it. You can raise the salaries and lower the standards, I don't think that's gonna solve our situation. And, um, a five, one final thought, which is, talking about education, I was re- reminded when somebody was talking about the outdoor play today, that the Greek ideal of, uh, of a perfected mind and a perfected body is important. And the concept of, uh, of a good, robust physical education program that includes an outdoor stuff and, uh, as well as academic is, uh, is pretty much a model we should try and adhere to as well. So, uh, going forward, those will be some of the things that I'd love to see us take on, Mr. Chair.
That sounds good to me.
I'm good.
All right, uh, I know it's late, and I don't have much. Um, I like to, uh, Ms. Walsh mentioned about the swim teams. I see Mountain View Boys Team won the county meet for the first time ever in school history. I think I picked that up in the, in the press. And the other thing I wanna talk about is commend, uh, one of my colleagues from Rockham, Rockham County Public School Board, uh, Dan Breeden, uh, has, is completing his twenty-fourth year in District One, and that's Elkton. And when he ran, uh, it was the time they combined Elkton High School and Montevideo High School into Spotswood. And his community said there will never be another high school in Elkton. But during his twenty-four years, they built two elementary schools in this part of the county, and they built a high school, East Rockham High School. They renovated Magicusville Elementary, Spotswood, Elkton Middle. And Elkton Middle, which was Elkton High School, Dr. Heingardner, they put air conditioning into school. And his patron said they will never see AC in that school again. So I wanna commend him for his service. He is, he's retiring at the end of the term. And then the last thing, I wanna end on a, a bright note, I hope you build your spirits up. This is Fe- February and Valentine's, and I got this from Facebook, Kyle, from one of my former girlfriends in college, which was about fifty years ago. And she sent this to me, or she posted this, and it's there. "A group of professional people asked this question to a group of four-to-eight-year-olds, and the question was, 'What is love?'" And here are some of the responses. "When my grandmother got arthritis, she couldn't bend over and paint her toenails anymore. So my grandfather does it for her even though he has arthritis in his hands." That's love. "When someone loves you the way they say your name is different. You just know your name is safe in their mouth." Love, I like this one. "Love is when a girl puts on perfume and my boy puts on shaving cologne, and they go out and smell each other." "Love is when you go out to eat and give somebody most of your french fries without making them give any of theirs." "Love is what makes you smile when you're even tired." "Love is when mommy makes coffee for daddy and she takes a sip before giving it to him to make sure it tastes okay." "Love is what's in the room when you, at Christmas, if you stop opening presents and just listen." "If you want to learn to love better, you should start with a friend that you hate." We need more of that, do we not? I like this one. "Love is when you tell a guy you liked his shirt, then he wears it every day afterwards." Uh, let me see, uh, let me, uh, I'm gonna finish this up. But, but all these are so cute. But the last one i- is the best one of it all, and I will close with this. "The winner of this contest, or this thing that the professional asks, a four-year-old girl whose next-door neighbor was an element, elderly gentleman who has recently lost his wife. Upon seeing the man cry, the little boy went over to the old man's yard, climbed under his lap, and just sat there. When his mother asked, 'What did you say to the neighbor?', the little boy said, 'Nothing, I just tried to help him cry.'" I adjourned the meeting at nine fifteen. Good evening.